Six o'clock, it's six o'clock.
Thank goodness, Kerry and Mr. Brown.
I call this meeting to order. As Chairman of the Select Board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is meeting electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access this meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at leenh.org. If anyone has a problem with access, please call 603-659-5414, extension 312. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law. Selectman Bugby?
I'm here and there's nobody in the room with me.
Selectman Bugby? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm here and then there's nobody in the room with me.
Okay.
Yep.
Select person, Casper?
Here and alone.
Selectman Brown, here and alone, thank you very much. I want to call the meeting, Public Comment. We are going to implement Public Comment. Please use the Raise Hand feature and wait to be recognized and unmuted. You will have three minutes to speak, and I would appreciate it if you would even do two, because we have a very heavy agenda tonight.
Mr. Brown, would it be okay for us-
I'm sorry?
Sorry, but it'd be okay for us to take down the agenda and to have cameras on during that time?
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't hear you clearly.
Is it possible to take down the agenda so we can see each other?
Oh, so stop sharing?
Yeah, would that be okay? Great, thank you.
Mr. Tappin would like to speak?
Okay. John Tappin, 180 stepping stones road. For the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, the Select Board has been named by the legislative body as the agent of the town to carry out the objects designated by the town. The library building is a town building. The Select Board is responsible for those design trade-off decisions that affect the life cycle cost and safety. The July 8, 2020 library design had an entry vestibule, a second toilet room, and a custodial closet with service sink. None of these features are included in the December 11, 2020 design. There are at least two problems with failing to include a custodial closet. It reduces the efficiency of our custodial staff, something that the town will pay for year after year, but the greatest harm is done by the message that this would send to the employees that we count on. It would tell our custodial staff that we do not value them enough to provide them with the tools they need to do their work efficiently, and by extension, we do not value clean buildings. Is this a message that the Select Board wants to send? The February 12 Library Trustees Meeting Minutes recorded by SMP Architecture note that SMP provided conceptual design and construction schedule. Team walked through each item discussing the stages. Also, the "team reviewed the total project budget last updated January 5, 2020, and 2021", end quote. "The team discussed how much it has already been removed from the project scope while achieving the goals renovating the interior and adding a lift." At the budget hearings in December and January, the project cost was presented as about $800,000. I've heard that it's now near $600,000. I've asked Selectman Bugby if the Select Board has received any breakdown of the project cost or if they know what has been removed from the project to cause this cost reduction. The answer was no. The reserve funds to be drawn on are town money, not library money. If the Select Board, as the agent for the town, does not know what they are buying, then they should stop approving expenditures of the town's money until they have complete information about the project. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me, but we got a little out of order there. That's, that's my fault, but let me just, if you don't mind, let me finish the Public Comment part. This is number two. Please use the Raise Hand feature and wait to be recognized and unmuted. You will have three minutes to speak. If you're using a telephone to connect to the meeting, please press star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Press star six to unmute yourself. This moves us then to item number three, which is the Select Board Organizations. We have a lot of input relative to the Goals and Objectives header, and I'm not quite sure how we should go through this. Should we schedule a separate meeting just for Goals and Objectives later on in the week or next week so we can go through all of them?
If anyone's-
Discuss it?
If anyone's on to discuss it this evening, I'd love to hear from them this evening. I don't want anyone to come back, but I do love the idea of having us have a separate meeting where we can really take the time to go into it.
Selectman Bugby, your opinion?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay, so, so do we agree that we could just, if you would, collect all the goals and objectives, put them in, put them in a separate slot for tonight and move on then to item four?
If, if we're done with Public Comment, I think we just heard from Mr. Tappin. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak?
Well, Public Comment is, is valid all the way down the list here. Scott, is that okay with you?
Yeah, as long as people get to speak on those particular issues that they're here for.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move to Annie Gazowski, Library Trustee Chair. Annie, you were there a minute ago.
At the last Select Board meeting, we had asked for, we had recommended that North Point Engineering be the firm that we chose for the civil engineering for the library project. And since there was more, the Select Board wanted more information, and I sent to all of them the various communications between us and the two firms for the proposals. And as a result, also, we discussed the letter from the Conservation Commission, and we had the two members of the Conservation Commission at our trustees' meeting last Wednesday, and we had a very good dialogue with them, and we, we got the feeling that they would recommend that North Point Engineering would be the, the firm to go with. So, we are keeping the Select Board updated, and this is the, the company, the firm that we would like to have do the civil engineering. We are not actually asking for any money with this recommendation. We're waiting for later to make withdrawals from the Capital Reserve Funds. So at this point, we are still in the recommendation stage. We would like to get North Point on, online, and as I said in the last meeting, this is like the second step in, in the project. So we're moving through them, and with the help of the Conservation Commission, Planning and Zoning Administrator, and this is what we would like to have happen tonight.
If I may ask a question, you are, you are saying North Point is the one that you, you select?
Yes, that's, that's, trustees would like to recommend that one as the choice.
My, my, my question on that is, when I go to the last page of North Point's letter and, and the list of excluded items, it's a very, it's a very long list. I'm not a, I'm not a construction person. It just seems to me that a lot of them are pretty important.
Well, some, we do realize that some of them, they have already discussed in their, in a letter from them after the contract came out. So I, I get the feeling that a lot of those things in that last section are pretty much a boilerplate, and even the one that talks about the Conservation Commission being listed there, they have definitely said that's, you know, that they will deal with the Conservation Commission and help us with, with working to them and, and with them through the issues that are involved.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Oh. For me, I would want to see something from North Point in terms of the contract that addresses those particular points. The last contract I saw from them said they excluded all those particular things. And I think, and I said, I heard that you said you were working with the Planning and Zoning Administrator. I think she can probably give you guys a good idea in terms of what that process will look like from her perspective going in front of the ZBA and the planning board. So if they're quoting you $11,000, and then the rest of it's going to be, you know, as the hourly rate, I'd rather like to have that included, that they're going to be covering those particular things. So hopefully, when you guys get the final contract, that stuff is included, and if they're anticipating two days in front of the ZB or two meetings or whatever it is, that that is included in the contract.
Okay, there was a, a letter from them. In fact, I sent an email to them asking whether or not there would be a change in the fee schedule after the last meeting, and they said that all the things that we, that had been mentioned would be included in that fee, fee schedule. So there were no, no inclusions or any more. They weren't upping the, the fee schedule at all. It was going to stay the same at 11,000, but I'm sure we can, we can get that, those questions answered and put into the contract before it's signed.
All right, that's my particular point.
Any other questions, comments?
John Tappin has a question or comment?
John?
This is actually Ann commenting for the Conservation Commission.
Yes, hello, so Ann Tappin, and this is making comments from the Conservation, representing the Conservation Commission. First of all, I would like to clarify that at the meeting, at the meeting with the Conservation Commission members, which was myself and Chair Dawn Jeans at the library meeting, we did not say anything about whether we recommended either contract. One of my big concerns, well, I have a number of concerns, one is that the, in your agenda packet, it presented a lot of information about this process, and it said that there was a letter sent from the Conservation Commission to the library. It's not included in this. The, in the whole, in the list of added items. So I would like to start by reading selected highlights from that letter, from the Conservation Commission letter to the library, if I may. This was dated March 28, and it went to the library trustees and to the Select Board. At the February meeting of the Conservation Commission, the proposed library expansion was discussed in light of wet soils conservation issues, intrusion into the wet soils conservation zone, how the roof design affects runoff, drainage and filtration and erosion. A good portion of the existing library footprint is in the wet soils buffer, which is a 75-foot zone from the edge of the Lee bog. The proposed addition is, at its closest point, approximately 57 feet from the bog, the wet soils. The wet soils buffer behind the library is intended to protect a state of New Hampshire-recognized, unique natural resource feature, a bog. The Lee bog is significant enough to be concluded, to be included on the New Hampshire Heritage Bureau's Rare Plants and Exemplary Natural Communities List. In further in the letter, it strongly suggested that the proposals for engineering for the library expansion be resubmitted to include compliance with zoning Article 15, the Wet Soils Buffer Act. "It is important to consider these matters as early in the process as possible. All effort should be made to avoid degradation to a unique natural resource feature. Expansion should be, to the greatest extent possible, fully outside of the wet soils conservation zone and further away from Lee's unique statewide-recognized exemplary natural resource feature, the bog. The Conservation Commission is available for consultation at any time, and this was signed by Dawn Jeans, the Chair of the Conservation Commission. The library did invite members of the Commission to their April 14 meeting. We reviewed points in the letter, and also we explained to them the three rules for planning near wetland, near wetlands. It's number one is always to avoid. Number two is to minimize impact, and number three is mitigate. It appears that numbers one and two, avoid and minimize, have been skipped right over, and we've moved apparently into mitigate. And it concerns us that the contract, specific, as Scott, as Mr. Bugby was saying, it specifically excludes the Conservation Commission and any zoning board meetings in the process. It's true, there is a letter from North Point that says, "We do now understand something about the situation. However, I think that it's crucial that a revised contract be provided for the board to consider." And also, just to note that the motion that's presented before you currently is for work towards the renovations on the Lee Public Library. And when you read the contract, the scope of the contract deals with expansion of the Lee Public Library. So those two things don't match up. So the Commission is, remains concerned about the impacts that the current design of the library has, and is especially concerned that the contract does not reflect what is needed to consider wetland issues. Thank you.
Any comments, anybody?
Sorry.
Sorry, Katrinka Pelechia would like to speak.
Um, yeah, hi, thank you for recognizing me, Charlie. There's a couple of things I'd like to say. I mean, I think the impression that the trustees got from our meeting with the Conservation Committee was possibly a little more positive than is being currently related. And yes, I believe avoid, minimize, and mitigate is certainly a great plan to follow. It's hard for the library to do this since we're already within the 75-foot setback, and we can't, if we move too far forward, you know, if we move the addition out of the setback, then, you know, we're kind of doing, you know, on top of the museum. I mean, we're, we're kind of, we're between, you know, two, two areas, and we're doing the best that we can. We certainly will minimize as much as possible. They mentioned, both Dawn and Ann talked about runoff from the rough, and we're, we will definitely be talking about that. Talked about specialized glass so that birds don't crash into it. That was a concern, and we certainly will look into that. We, back from our, one of our very first meetings with the Planning Commission, Karen Rossi, and she broke out very specifically that we would be meeting with Conservation and Planning and various players before we would go to final approval. We are in no way final reprobable. The test that we are doing now, the geotechnical boines and then also the civil engineering are going to help us make some decisions as to the final plan. These are things that have to be done. We have a very, you know, it's a rough plan now, and it will be fine-tuned as we get more information about the site. But this is, you know, these are things that we can do before we go to final design that will be built. To, you know, it's, it's frustrating to be thwarted at these very early stages. We need civil engineering done. I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that, and it's, we got the impression that the second letter from North Point, and we did send the Conservation Committee's letter too, though we could certainly forward emails to prove that if, if necessary. Anyway, I mean, this is work we need to have done to see the site and to get, and to get information and to do it the best way possible. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, you had a comment?
Two things, one, one, hopefully the other Select Board members agree with me. It's always been, at least since I've been on the board, the policy of the board, maybe not officially written, but that's what I want to state at the moment, that anytime the, the town goes through any kind of process like this, in terms of building or stuff, then we will adhere to our own zoning regulations. So in my, in my opinion, just like everything else, it needs to go in front of the ZBA, and it needs to go in front of the planning board. So I just want to make sure the board is still in agreement with that particular procedure so that is, there is no gray area, if you will, in terms of what our intentions are. So hopefully, the board will concur with me on that particular thought. The second thing is, I don't know, this is a question for Annie. Have you guys thought about moving? And I know what Katrinka is saying in terms of, if you move it too far forward, now you're interfering with the museum, but is there been any thought about moving it forward maybe half the way, three quarters of the way? So that you're far enough away from the museum, but you're out of the, the wetland buffer area as much as possible?
Well, one of the, one of the reasons we didn't want to move it forward, we really want to maintain the integrity of the schoolhouse, and that's why we kept, put it in a straight line from the addition that's there now. If we move it forward, would be, would be right up against the schoolhouse portion, which is not something that we really wanted to do.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking right up against where that section where Ruth's office is and where the checkout desk is. I'm not thinking up in front of the schoolhouse.
Okay.
That was just a thought, because I think one of the things, and I'm not sure, Mary Karen can give us a better idea in terms of when the ZBA and the planning board look at these things, they're going to be looking at things like what Ann brought up in terms of avoidance, mitigation and avoidance. So I'm wondering if you brought it up a little bit more, they would look more favorably on this particular request? I'm not sure. I don't know if Karen can give us some insight into what exactly they'll be looking at when they do go through this particular process?
Sure, so when you reply for variance and you go before the zoning board, you have to have exhausted all other options. And if you can't meet those other options, you have to, as part of your testimony, you have to explain why they're not an option. And you have to convince the board that you, the setback harming the, going into the setback is the lesser of the evils. So you have to answer that you've exhausted all the options and why you're seeking the variance.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
And, and just as a comment, Scott, I, I certainly agree with you relative to adhering to the, to the construction requirements of our planning and zoning regulations. Okay.
Can I add something as well?
I'm sorry?
Sure, I just, can I just make it, sorry, I just want to make sure everybody understands that the, the, if you're going to make a motion, the motion that you see on the screen is different from the one that you see in your packet. We didn't get confirmation from the library until today that if they're allowed to move forward with North Point on this contract, the funding is coming out of their operating budget.
Okay. Do we move, do we move on this motion then? Do we go forward with this motion?
That's up to the Select Board.
Yeah, I think I would just like to say really quickly that I think it's important, while we're deciding all these things, I think that the library is in a, in a challenging position. They're between a wetland and a historical feature, trying to maintain the historical nature of their building. I think something we also don't understand about libraries necessarily is sightlines and how important it is when we have a low number of staff to be able to see so that they can, you know, know what's going on in the library when there are only a few people there. So I think it's important that we try to help the library as much as we can. I, I feel like I feel a little more confrontational than I want it to, because I think the goal is to help them to be able to expand, and I just want to make sure working together on that.
I personally am not in favor of this going forward, because I don't have a contract that includes those things I mentioned earlier. So the contract is the whole thing, that's a legal binding contract between the parties, and it doesn't include all the things that I believe need to be in there. So I am not in favor of this particular thing at this particular time. They come back with a contract that includes those items, I'll be totally in favor of it, so.
I have my hand up. John Tappin?
Okay, but I don't see it, but go ahead.
I don't see it, there I see it.
There it is.
I have a comment about how construction projects should proceed. The earlier in the construction project, that problems are recognized and addressed, the less expensive they are to correct. And what we keep hearing from the library trustees is, as issue after issue comes up, is that these are things they will address later. But everything that gets addressed later costs more. And I don't know if they recognize that, but it's much less expensive to get these issues addressed at as early as possible and not wait until you are paying the professionals large amounts of money, and then you have to try to make changes. Thank you.
Hi, my hand is, is up. I've kind of taken it down and put it back up. May I just say a couple of words?
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to say is that we're, we're very aware of, you know, the best practice is to abide by the town rules and to get variances. Karen had made that, you know, obvious to us, and we've always known it, because any project that we've done with our library building, we've always known that we've been within the buffer zone, the setback of, of the bog. So we're, you know, we are very aware of that. And one of the reasons we want, we really need to move forward with the civil engineering as well as the geotechnical boines, which will be done next week, by the way, is to get information at the early stage before we go to final design. We're not in final design. I, you know, I do keep saying that, and we certainly will take everything into consideration. One thing about the addition, a couple of years ago, we were doing the balance for the whole town center project. Our addition was closer to the road than it we're showing now, but if you recall, at that time, the museum was going to be moved. So we had the space. I think at one time I realized if we went ahead and built and the museum wasn't moved, they were going to come very, very close together. That would be, you know, not suitable for either structure and be very hard to walk around and get to the trails. I mean, that we, that's an important feature that we want to exploit with the library and the part, you know, in partnership with the Trails Committee, is making that, you know, keeping that accessible. So there are lots of considerations. We're trying to work with people. And, yeah, I mean, people can come to our meetings and talk to us. It was great to have Ann and Dawn come last week as opposed to getting into, as Katrin mentioned, a more confrontational situation, which I do feel we're in now. I got the impression that the second letter from North Point was received reasonably well by the Conservation Committee. I, you know, maybe I was misreading it, but that was my impression. So again, we're just asking to move forward. We're, it's, we're not, it's more of an FYI, we, we want to move forward, and this is what we feel the next step is. And I think we've gotten, you know, North Point- And I think we've gotten, you know, North Point is, we're not, was not familiar with the site. They will be and will certainly give us, I think, some excellent recommendations. Thank you.
If you don't mind, Katrinka, I think we need to move ahead.
Yep, absolutely. I didn't expect this to take long, this long either.
So, I'd like to enter a motion, move to authorize the library trustees to enter into a contract with North Point Engineering LLC for civil engineering site work towards the renovations on the Lee Public Library in an amount not to exceed $11,000. Can I, $11,000. Can I get a second? There's no second. The motion fails.
So, just to reiterate what Scott said, we will get them to make a point of each of the listed items in the last page and say how they will be dealing with those. And we will resubmit to, to the select board.
Yes, specifically, I would ask you, I would suggest you have a conversation with Karen Rossi. Find out from her, in her expert opinion, how long that process would take. Is it a series of two meetings, one meeting, whatever, in front of the land use boards? And have that given to SMP to finalize how much it would cost to do those particular activities. And if you can have that, all that information included in the contract with their saying, we will be attending the ZBA and planning board and whatever to get those approvals, I would be happy to approve that particular thing or at least vote for that particular motion. So, that's where I'm coming from, Annie.
Okay. We understand that, and we can, we can do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we will move on to item five. It's Larry Kinberg, Recreation Commission Chairman.
Good evening, everybody. Julie, I have a quick question before I get started. How do I use the raise hand function on this?
I've actually maybe, oh, Karen, maybe you know this. If someone is a panelist, can they use the raise hand function? I think you can.
Larry should just go down the bottom, Larry, and raise hand. He just clicked raise hand, just like Steve did.
Oh, really?
Yep.
And I don't see anything on the bottom at all.
So, Larry, go to the bottom of your screen.
Yeah.
And do you see where it says participants and share screen, and go over to the right of share screen, says raise hand?
No, I don't have that on there. I have Q and A.
It doesn't. Larry, click on the participants.
For me, I have to click on more where there's three dots. I don't, I can't get there unless I click on that. So, maybe you have a pad like I do.
If you click on.
I see, I see the raise, I see the raise hand. Okay, I got it. Thank you. The first item that I have is, we have two applicants to the Recreation Commission, Eva Lizer and Ellen Moriarty, which you have copies of their applications. And at the April 6th commission meeting, we voted to approve accepting them on the commission. So, we're forwarding this to the select board for your approval.
Is that it?
It's it.
That's all you want to say?
I try to keep it short and sweet.
All right. Well, it was short.
Well.
So, I enter a motion.
How would you look me to sweeten it up?
I'll enter a motion, move to approve the appointments of Eva Lizer and Ellen Moriarty as members of the Recreation Commission to each serve until March 2024. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second that.
Motion passed. You're there, Larry.
Thank you.
No, it's a pass yet.
No. You have to do a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I have to do a roll call vote. Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select, select person Casper?
Yes.
Select person Brown? That's me. Yes.
Now, can I say thank you?
Absolutely.
Okay. The next item, I just wanted to go back over the Model Rocket Day program and the Summer Concert Series. And what I did was put together just a basic procedure for this year for the Model Rocket Day, which you have a copy of. And what we'd like to do, in the past, we've built model rockets on that day in the pavilion. But with the COVID issue and being limited with the number of tables to do such a thing, we have about 40 kids that show up for this with their parents and guardians. What we're going to do this year is hand out the rockets ahead of time, which will make notice in the town crier and the, the Lee page. And have people pick them up. We'll either set it up down at the pavilion where they can stop by and pick up their rockets and pre-build them at home, or we'll set up another spot, but we'll have several, several days. We'll be doing that well ahead of time. We're also going to, for those that are not so adept at building the rockets, we're going to have some pre-made for them so that the kids can participate. We do want to encourage the use of face masks and the social distancing as much as possible. I think outside will be, will be fine with that. So, we just, I just wanted to run that by the select board and make sure I'm not missing anything there. The Summer Concert Series, you have a spreadsheet on the program there. We're going to start that on July 8th on a Thursday evening. And it looks like we've got eight, eight acts booked for the two months that we're going to run this. So, I also just want you to be aware of that. And that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much, Larry.
So, we. One other thing, we are still working on the archery program, but I'm running into a problem finding someone to run that program, an archery instructor to do that, but we're still working on that.
Okay, I get the point.
Sorry.
That was bad.
I'm sorry. I'm. Got the point.
That's, yeah. Mr. Brown, I have a question.
Okay.
One of the things, and it relates to Larry's two events here, and also we've got a request from the VFW for Memorial Day. Can we hear from Ms. Rossi, since she's our health officer? Because this is kind of be a change for us. We haven't sponsored any, you know, public events for a while since COVID started. So, are we good for having public events now, Ms. Rossi? Or what is your opinion?
Well, I was just going to, Karen, Karen's the next one on the list, Scott. So, Karen, you're up.
No, I talked to Chief Nemeth on, about the events, oh, two weeks ago. And what we both discussed was that when it came closer to the events, we would develop some guidelines for everybody to follow. The state does allow outside events. There's more information following, coming from the state. They expect the next announcement to be around May 7th, about the most, next set of changes. But we felt, when we talked and we, and I've talked to Chief Drunsfield as well, and Julie Glover, you know, as the things get closer, we'll develop guidelines for people to follow.
Okay. Now, does the state have any size guidelines that are imposed at this time?
None.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Scott, anything else?
No, I'm just.
Are you happy?
Um, I suppose generally happy, yes.
Okay.
Optimistic, hopeful. How about that?
That's fine. Karen, you're up again.
Thank you. So, um, so there's a medical need at, which is what precipitated this change, is a medical needs for one of the houses being changed, and the medical professionals were having a hard time finding the house. So, we contacted the state E911 numbering system. These three units currently have a Pine Hill Village address, but they're located on Route 125. So, E911 said that the actual correct address for these three units should be Caleb Highway. So, because each unit and the park owner is in an agreement for the change, no public hearing has to be held. They've all signed off on the changes. E911 just needs the select board chairman, I think it is, to sign the form that is submitted. And then these changes will be in effect, effective of May 11th at midnight. So, what participated, what started this change was medical needs for one of the residents. And then reached out to us to see if there's anything we could do. We contacted E911, and E911 said that they actually should be, the proper address should be Caleb Highway and not Pine Hill Village. So, that is what is prompting the change.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No.
Like to enter a motion, move to accept the following address changes within the town of Lee, six Pine Hill Lane in Lee to 226 Caleb Highway in Lee, four Pine Hill Lane in Lee to 224 Caleb Highway in Lee, two Pine Hill Lane in Lee to 222 Caleb Highway in Lee. Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I didn't hear anything. I'm sorry.
Really? Really? Okay.
Uh, okay, roll call vote. Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Select, selectman Brown? Yes. It's a done deal. Motion passes.
So, the next item that I have is, as you all are aware, there's a very active, wonderful Trails Committee in town. And part of their charge that they're working on first is the Maude Jones Forest. And in that, they would like to do some tweaking to the parking lot that's currently there. And in that work, they asked me to look to make sure that they had a driveway permit. Well, they didn't. Well, they don't because they got a driveway permit back in 2012, but that expired in 2013. They got it in 2013 and it expired in 2014. They had a temporary driveway permit for their logging. So, now they would like to make that access a permanent access so they can do some tweaking to the parking lot. Because as you all know, the trails have been used a lot more since the COVID pandemic. So, they would like to work on the trails some more and work on the parking lot. But before they do that, they need a permit, a driveway permit. So, this application is just to get a permit, fingers crossed, exactly where it already is there. So, we just need you to, the board to vote to sign this, and I can send it into New Hampshire District 6 to get what is there, hopefully permitted.
Okay, I'll enter a motion, move to approve the driveway permit application for access to the Maude Jones Forest as presented. Can I get a second?
Second. I do have a question from Ms. Rossi, though.
Sure.
Okay.
Is there no fee?
There is no fee. Correct, no fee.
Oh, my, oh, my God. I think I'm going to have a heart attack. State having something with no fee associated with it. My goodness.
I know. Pretty good, huh?
All right. Thank you, Karen.
We have no concerns for the neighbors. Is that correct? And also, I know I spoke to Chief Drunsfield, that hopefully it's a safe access and an out, or are we just talking about the permit right now, I guess?
So, the state of New Hampshire will decide if it's safe or not. They have criteria. And hopefully, they will allow it to stay where it is. But if they don't, they, they require, I think it's a 400-foot sight distance in each way. And they will assure that it's safe, meets their criteria. Thank you.
Dawn Jeans would like to comment?
I just wanted to say that several members of the Conservation Commission were on site with Don Quigley, who is the closest neighbor. He's right across the street. And Don was very much in favor of this happening and had no objections whatsoever. I had never pulled into that spot until we met that day. I was concerned about the sightlines and access too. But actually, you're able to pull completely off the road, and you're able to pull out without ever having to back out into 155. So, sightlines are really good from being on the crest of that hill and looking left and right. It would take a little bit of modification, but we're still only talking six or eight cars maximum anyways. But it had been well done when it was used as a log landing, and it would take minor improvements.
Great news. Thank you.
Hey, roll call vote, please. Scott Bugby, selectman Bugby?
Uh, yes.
And select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown? Yes. Motion passes.
I think my next item is the employee picnic at Little River Park. I would like permission for the board, for all of us employees to get together at Little River Park on Tuesday, May, I think it's May 18th, with the rain date of May 25th, just to get together as employees to have lunch. Probably BYO, you know, BYO, what do you call it? Potluck? Just, you know, we haven't really had a chance to get together casually, or, you know, it's been, you know, a hectic year with a lot going on. So, I thought it'd just be nice for us employees to get, just get together and relax and have lunch outside at the park. So, we don't have to worry about any COVID issues. Or less COVID issues, I should say. By then, any and all employees will be vaccinated that wish to be, and will be out of our two-week timeframe.
And so, but what date is that you want to have it?
I think, Julie, would you mind scrolling down? Is it, I think it's, it's a Tuesday.
I don't think there's.
Oh, no, I think it's Tuesday, May 18th, with the rain date of Tuesday, May 25th.
Yeah, I didn't, did you send us something on this?
No, that's fine. I probably, I didn't. Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, yeah, May 18th is a Tuesday.
Yes. So, we want to do one on a Tuesday because of Joanne and Liz.
Okay, so I'll enter a motion to approve the employee picnic at Little River Park on Tuesday, May 18th. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
I do have a question for Karen Rossi.
Sure.
Maybe my hearing's going, but did you say BYOB?
I slipped. Bring your own brisket.
Brisket.
Brisket. So, there will be no alcohol at this event?
Correct. We would.
Okay. All right. Well, I was against it if you were going to bring alcohol. So, now that there's no alcohol, I'm in favor. So.
B is brisket.
Okay.
Roll call vote, selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Selectman, select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown? Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then you've got the yard sale, Karen.
Oh, and then one last thing. So, I'm not sure if you remember, last fall, we did a, we, the town facilitated a town-wide yard sale. So, there's been people requesting it to happen again this spring. So, I was going, asking the board if that would be okay for the board, for us to facilitate a town-wide yard sale.
I love that idea.
And would it be, Karen?
It would be. I'm going to put a Facebook poll out tonight as soon as I get the, and let the, you know, majority of the citizens pick a day.
So, are you thinking like end of May, beginning of June, or?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. I think people prefer the yard sale before it gets too hot. That's what I think. Um, so I was going to put a poll out on Facebook as soon as I got approval and see what they want.
Sure. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, is it, do we have a motion?
No, you don't really need to make a motion, just as long as the board agrees.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move down to number seven. Scott Nemeth, Fire Chief?
Good evening. I received a phone call from the state of New Hampshire last week. They were reaching out to see if we could assist Walgreens in town with the vaccinations. But by doing that, the state will reimburse the town back for the pay for the firefighters. But if we do that, we need to turn an agreement, Emergency Management Directive with the state of New Hampshire. So, I was wondering if the board would approve that so we could help them out. Uh, so I was wondering if the board would approve that so we could help them out.
Comments, questions?
Chief, can you detail what kind of help are you gonna give them? Are you gonna be jabbing people with needles or doing paperwork? What are you gonna be doing?
We don't jab people with needles, but. With Walgreens, they're asking us to assist them with checking people in. The pharmacy will be doing the, the needle sticks. But this will also allow us to have other members go help out at West River High School, uh, extra, any of the sites that we have around here. We do have some members that are doing it with other departments that they're on. Um, and I'm hearing that there's a, a big need uh for EMTs to help with the shots.
Yep. I can, I can attest to that. I just went this last week to Walgreens and they are totally understaffed. I went to the one in Lee and it's there, you could tell that they did not have enough staff to do what they're doing, so.
Yeah, all hands on deck.
Yeah. I, I'm in favor of this.
Me too.
Okay, enter a motion. Move to authorize the fire chief to enter into an emergency management directive with the state of New Hampshire, Department of Health and Human Services. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can you hear him?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got, I got hung up on a.
Second, 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 second.
Coming up on my screen. Okay, roll call vote, selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move on to what? Portable radios?
Correct. Um, I'm asking the board if we could purchase eight mobile Motorola mobiles. Portable radios, sorry, uh, for the racetrack detail that we do. Um, and also the equipment that goes with that. So the headsets and we're looking at harnesses that we wear. Um, a couple of years ago, we purchased a bunch of the racetrack suits. So that the firefighters that were working that detail had the proper equipment, the safety equipment. This just ties into that. Uh, throughout the years, we've worked, used different radios. Uh, we've bought cheap radios that do not last one race, two races. Um, we've worked with a company that works down at the racetrack. Waddell Communications, we've asked them to see what other people are using, to see what the racetrack uses. This is the same uh radios that the track uses. And then I reached out to Two Way Communications, who's, who does all of our other portables, asked them for a quote as well. Um, they can't get the appropriate headsets that we're looking for. Um, and then when I look online at the different prices for the CP two hundreds, Waddell Communications has the best prices that we're finding. So we were wondering if we could move forward with that. And the money would come out of the special duty fund, revolving fund.
Is there any other place that you can use them or is it just at the racetrack?
No, we can, it'll be for any detail. We can use them anywhere. So if Karen needs them for the uh Lee Faraday, we'll use them that way. Um, any events that need to be used, we can use them for. The majority will be down at the racetrack.
Any other questions?
This is also part of the plan we had originally had anyway to purchase radios. A while ago, right?
No, that's separate.
Okay, additional.
So be, because this is the detail with the racetrack, we try and use the money out of that um fund.
Um, one of the attendees would like to comment, Renee Litke. Go ahead.
Hi Karen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Great. Um, this is a, this is a question outside of the topic that's being discussed. So I don't know if you guys want to finish your conversation there or if I can just ask my question.
Just ask your question.
Okay, so I am the resident of the James Farm neighborhood. And I'm fairly new to the neighborhood. Um, my address is thirty-three James Farm Road, and I understand that there's been some conversation around the wetlands that are here and the path of the water flow. So I was hoping to see if I could get some insight on the board's position or where that topic rests and what are the next steps?
Uh, Ms., I don't think we're in a position to respond to that question right now, to be honest with you.
Okay, are you waiting for additional information or?
Yes, additional information and uh a review of all of the issues that are involved. It's not, it's not that simple. And we, we just have not reached a uh uh, an endpoint with it.
Okay, um. It will it just be intermittently added to the agenda as additional information becomes available?
I, I don't know whether it will come on the agenda again or not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I move to authorize the fire chief to purchase eight Motorola CP two hundred D portable radios and equipment at a cost not to exceed five thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents as proposed by Waddell Communications and Repairs with funding from Public Safety Duty Revolving Fund. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Bugby seconded.
Okay, I didn't hear anything.
Really?
Yeah, I just.
Are the rest of you not hearing me when I?
I can hear you every time, so I'm wondering if I should just second going forward.
Well, that's because you're right below them there.
I don't think that's how it works, Mr. Brown, but.
Anyway, anyway, uh, motion, motion passes.
We haven't voted, I think.
You haven't voted yet.
We haven't done the roll call vote?
No, we just did the second. We had a laugh about that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh. So roll call vote, selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
There it is. Motion passes.
And you chose not to vote, Mr. Brown?
Ah, me. Selectman Brown, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
So we are down to the town administrator.
Thank you. So for many years, the town has used Sea Coast Ready Care um, and belonged to a consortium through them for hours. Federally mandated drug and alcohol testing for employees with a CDL license. Um, and they are, they've been bought out and they, their offices are closing, their locations are closing. So Denise Duval and Steve Bullock have been doing a lot of work um, to try to find a new vendor for this. And um, we've settled on onsite drug testing of New England. We only received the contract fairly late today. Um, but I've looked it over and other than I would like Primex to review the indemnity language, um, it's pretty straightforward. So at this time, we're asking for the board to approve entering into a contract with onsite.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Uh, how long is this particular contract? Cause I don't see a contract per se.
Again, that's, sorry, this document that came in late in the day.
Okay, and my second, second question is where are those testing locations? Because I'm seeing Concord, New Hampshire. Do our people have to drive all the way to Concord to get tested?
No, they have a location in New Market.
Oh, good.
Um, they also will provide for more money if we want it. They will come to us.
Oh.
Um, in the past, we've sent our employees uh to the location either at Peas or in Summersworth.
Okay, so this would be a little bit closer going to New Market.
Correct.
Okay. So would you share the contract with us or?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Uh, and also the term, you must have it there with you because you've.
I don't think that it expires.
Oh.
This, again, this is something that we have to do.
Yep.
Um, and honestly, we're a little bit under the gun. We didn't get a whole lot of notice.
Okay.
Um, and again, this is under strict federal regulation as to how often the employees' names go into the pool to be drawn. Um, yeah, so.
There's no term, it's just an ongoing thing?
It's just an ongoing thing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can I just say something about this, Julie?
Sure.
So the only time they would ever, we would ever need them to come onsite was if we were out at we got a phone call at two in the morning and I thought somebody showed up under the influence and then I would make a phone call. And obviously, they're gonna come to the site if I think the person's been drinking. That would be the only time that we would ever use them onsite. But obviously, at that point, the ninety dollars or whatever it costs them to come is better than us having an incident.
Okay.
Okay, enter a motion. Move to approve entering into a contract with Onsite Drug Testing LLC to perform random drug and alcohol testing for town employees that are required to maintain a CDL, that's commercial driver license, license.
I'm not seconding this. I'm seconding that. All right, yes.
Well, good for you. Roll call vote, selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select, select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next item, uh, panic buttons. It was something that we, as you may recall, we had panic buttons at um town hall in the annex. And it was something that we talked about somewhat early on in the process of moving to this building. Um, but we just never really addressed it. Um, and then recently, there have been a couple of incidents, instances with angry citizens um that have made a couple of employees uncomfortable. So we're looking to install panic buttons in our new town offices. And I'd like to use the contingency fund um to pay for it.
Comments, questions? Enter, I'll make a, enter a motion, a move to authorize the town administrator to purchase panic buttons from Eastern Alarm and Communications, Inc. for the new town offices in an amount not to exceed one thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Purchase to be paid out of FY twenty-one contingency fund. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
I have questions.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The first one is, I thought you guys would have these already. So can somebody, maybe it's you or the chief Julie, could go through your process in terms of why didn't you have them installed when you guys moved in?
Yeah, just, I don't, I don't want to say that it slipped through the cracks. It just wasn't something that we had a whole lot of conversation about. Um, it's possible that we felt, some of us felt a greater sense of security because we weren't in one big open space.
Okay.
Um.
All right.
But as I've said, a couple of things have happened recently that started making the employees talk about it.
All right.
Yeah, they should be there.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Yeah.
Roll, roll call vote, selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, motion passes.
I have a question for the chief, for police chief, please. Yes. Can I make a request and hopefully the other select people will back me on this? I would like a drill done in the new facility. Once these buttons get put in place by your officers in terms of uh like you used to do at the town hall.
It's already in, it's already in the works.
Excellent. Thank you very much, chief.
Putting together a training um based on some new information that has come out with some groups who like to uh test their First Amendment rights.
Okay.
Uh, at town offices. Um, so I have Officer Doty working on a presentation. And I've been working with Julie on this and uh in the near future, that'll be happening.
Okay, actually, thank you. Appreciate it.
So uh, the next item is just the follow-up on the doggy Easter egg hunt. I don't know if any of you saw, there was an article. I think it was in Sunday's Sea Coast Online uh about it. Um, I understand from Ms. Bisson that it went quite well and people really appreciated it. Um, so you may recall that we had made some um qualifications when the board agreed to let uh her do this. So these, this is just a follow-up um to what some of our requests had been. And she's also asking um to be able to do it again next year. Um, I touched base with our attorney on this. Um, and again, this was kind of part of the original conversation, you may recall. Um, the attorney is recommending that the select board, you know, take a more global approach to this. Um, and come up with some policies if you are going to allow town property to be used for um, private commercial events. She feels that that's just kind of a bigger conversation that the select board should be having. Yeah, I agree.
What was their charity they donated their proceeds to?
Uh. They had named the three charities and actually they were in the um, the article.
Oh.
I think it's Mary's Dogs. Um. Karen, do you remember the other two?
I think one of them is Live and Let Live Farm and.
Yep, yep.
And I don't know the, I should know the third, but I don't.
I don't remember.
The other one is Hero Pups.
Hero Pups.
Thank you.
So they're community based, that it does the community a benefit, in essence. Hopefully, yes.
Yes, they're all local, they're all local um animal rescues, actually.
Okay, thank you.
So if the board's in agreement, we can put this on the agenda. Maybe for a couple of meetings from now, I'll try to find what other towns might have for policies and practices on this. Yeah, and get some input as well from Conservation Commission and some other, other groups to make sure we, we're thinking about all the angles.
Yes, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah. I, I'm in favor of it as well. The thing is, that's why I was asking about the charities and community benefit. I, I see the issue in terms of using public property for, for gain, but the thing is the community is gaining from this particular activity as well. So that, that would be my interest in the whole uh event, uh, if it happens again next year.
Right, but I, again, yeah, we're just looking to see if, for the next private company, if you will, that comes along where maybe there isn't a public benefit.
Then I would not be in favor of it then. So, okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, next item is just to give you an update on the treehouse. Um, that was on the Rick Stevens easement. The uh treehouse was destroyed uh completely during a windstorm in recent weeks. Um, and as a result of that, our attorney touched base with Mr. Stevens' attorney um, and determined that Mr. Stevens did not have plans to rebuild the treehouse. Um, so we filed a motion for voluntary non-suit um, which was granted by the court. So I would say that that issue is now closed.
Okay.
And next item of business, as was mentioned previously, the Lea VFW would like to have an abbreviated Memorial Day ceremony at Memorial Field on May thirty-first at one PM. Uh, they will not be having a parade. Um, I know that they've reached out to the police chief on this and I don't think that he has any issues with it. Um, but they're just looking to make sure that the board is okay with this.
Well, I'm absolutely okay with it.
Julie, can you touch base with Mr. Carl and find out, usually they request participation of the board chair? In terms of saying a few words, I'm not sure if that's the case this year. Could you check with him?
Yeah.
If that's the case, and if Mr. Brown is amenable?
The chair is already, the chair has already decided he would do that for him.
Well, as long as they want you there.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure. That's why I'm asking if she could check and just see if they were looking for participation like they have in previous years, so.
Yeah, I will do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, and then the last item that I have is relative to the mask mandate. Again, as you probably know, the governor listed the statewide, uh, mandatory mask mandate, uh, effective last Friday. And also announced that, um, on May seventh, it looks like it, it, most if not all of the rest of the COVID-related restrictions are gonna be lifted um, in the state of New Hampshire. So just wanna discuss with the board, um, what that might mean for town buildings, um, and specifically the town offices, as, um, Ms. Rossi alluded to. By, I think it's May seventh or May eighth, everyone that works in the town offices will be two weeks past their second COVID vaccine. So everyone that works in this building will be fully vaccinated. Um, I believe the other most of the other department heads as well will be fully vaccinated. So we are recommending that the mask requirement for town employees be lifted. Um, and possibly even for the public, but will continue to recommend that the public wear masks when in the town office building. I think we feel that now that the statewide mandate has been lifted, it's going to get harder to, um, enforce it. Even though towns and cities are allowed to adopt their own rules. And then I guess I would let the two chiefs speak uh, for what they wanna do in their building and then the same would be true of, um, the Public Works Director relative to the transfer station.
Scott and I discussed this a little earlier today and we're pretty much almost back to business as usual. We, it's difficult for us to close down anyway. Um, you know, we're still limited on some of the things and who we allow in the building. Uh, we may still continue that. It hasn't seemed to affect how we operate. Uh, the officers are still wearing, um, face coverings when dealing with the public, motor vehicle stops, things like that. Um, I guess we'll just, you know, keep going with the recommendations out from the state and and, you know, when we get to a point, I'll just probably some point make it, you know, leave it up to the individual officer, how comfortable they feel. Um, and what they would like to do.
Okay. Any other comments? Enter a motion, move to no longer require wearing a mask when in the town office building, effective May fifteenth. Can I get a second?
Um, can I just ask, I didn't realize you were going so quickly. I, I just think it's important, I think what he said was really valid, that, that I understand in the office when you're vaccinated to not need masks. I think when you're interacting with public, it's a different thing entirely. I have a immunocompromised daughter who can't get a vaccine because she's not the right age, so I just wanna be sure that that means we're still gonna make sure that people um, when they're, when they're working with the, the public and the public doesn't have a choice, that that person is um, has a mask on.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I, I do you have, you don't have your second yet?
No.
Cause I have some clarifications, I need to ask questions, but
Yeah, me too.
To do that, we have to do a second, so I guess I'll second it.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know that.
But, uh, I have some questions and cons- concerns to address, please.
Well, it doesn't say that anybody, you can't wear a mask, you can wear a mask somewhere if you want to. It's just saying it's not mandatory.
Well, I guess, my question relates to the wording of the thing, because we're talking about the town office building only, but then we're talking about the PSC and we're talking about the transfer station too. So what are we actually voting on? Just the town offices and not those other?
The town offices unless the other department heads have a definitive request tonight that they wanna make relative to their facilities.
So I guess my question would be to Steve, transfer station, are we gonna require masks? Or not? Same thing with the other two chiefs in terms of the PSC. We're gonna require masks or not, because those two facilities are not in this particular motion, so.
In the transfer station, we've never required people to wear masks. The only time that it was recommended was when the mask mandate was in place. Uh, most people wore them anyway and the ones that didn't, for the most part, respected the six feet distance. There were a few people that didn't. Um, and I told them to get out when they would belittle people wearing a mask and they asked them to please respect their distance and then they'd start getting yelled at, so those people were told to leave. Um, but for the most part, we didn't require it and the main reason was, is a lot of my guys that work in there, if they working on the trash floor, doing manual labor. Um, if we require them, then they would have to wear them with no one within thirty or forty feet of them. And it would turn into a, well, why isn't he wearing one? So we just went with the states, we've gone by whatever the state has recommended, so when they had the mask mandate, people wore them for the most part. Um, and before the mask mandates were put in place, we really didn't have that many issues with it. There were one or two complaints and that was pretty much it.
Okay.
And as far as the highway department goes, it's just the three of us.
Yeah.
We don't really deal, if the public comes in, you know, they'll wear one if they want, but we can maintain the six feet distance from them at all times if we have to.
Okay. And same thing with the PSC, the two chiefs?
I guess for me, my thing would be to do the, all the buildings the same. That way it makes it easier for all the residents. Um, you know, I agree with Tom, we've been moving forward with things, uh, we've kinda shut down the building, but there's still permits that we have to give out for, you know, oil burners and stuff like that and inspections that we do, we've been working with the public on that. Um, anytime we're gonna go out for an inspection, we're gonna continue wearing our masks. We do have quite a few of our members that are vaccinated, we have some that aren't. Uh, you know, it was their decision. And prior to all of this, before the vaccinations, my biggest concern was staffing. If I had one member that got exposed, that potentially could have been five more members that all get exposed and wiped out the fire department. Now I feel more comfortable and I think Tom does too, that we have enough people that are vaccinated that we're not as concerned. Um, if the public comes into the building, you know, e- either way, I'm fine with it, cause the day-to-day staff that we have is all vaccinated. Um, our medical side of things, we still have to follow protocols from the state of New Hampshire and they just sent out a, a thing saying that they're gonna continue with all the masks, so any calls we go on or out in the public, we're still gonna continue wearing the masks.
So our official town position is, we're not gonna require masks, but we recommend that people still use them if they need to? I guess, that's what I'm looking for, what is our official town position on this? And I agree with you, chief, it should probably all be the same. Um, so that's what I'm looking for. If that's possible.
I feel like it should be, we, where masks are not required when you're working in the office with people that you are, it's, you know, you're a bubble, but that when you're working with the public.
Yeah.
And it, and it, you know, like he said, everyone said, when they're outside of their office and they're working with the public, they have masks on. Um, and I, I guess if somebody comes in and they they have to come in in order to do something, pay a tax or to get a permit.
Yeah.
I, I'm concerned about not setting that standard. And then what if you have someone who hasn't been vaccinated, they've been exposed, the public comes in and, you know, now, I don't know, I just, I'm concerned about that. So I don't know, but maybe I guess, I guess.
So it sounds like you're okay with employees that work in the building not wearing a mask when we're the only ones in the building.
Yeah.
And then if we are face-to-face interacting with a member of the public, we wear a mask.
I, I, I'm, yeah, I guess, maybe even that's, it's, I don't know, I don't know, I, I don't wanna add any extra unnecessary requirements, but maybe it's an option. I know, um, that, you know, that that is an option that you could say, you know. I'll wear a mask, I, I don't know. I, I just, I wanna make sure that we're keeping people safe and not there's no, there's, there hasn't been a huge change yet, we're still at fifty percent vaccinated, we're not at a, at a you know, population number, we haven't, our numbers are increasing, they're not decreasing, so I just worry about someone coming in and they don't feel protected and I wanna make sure we're protecting the public, so I'm, I'm not quite I definitely agree that the people that are in the office together have been vaccinated, shouldn't have to wear a mask. Um, I'm more concerned about when some are vaccinated and some aren't, and then they're one-on-one-ing with the public and how do you as a public person know who's been vaccinated and who hasn't?
I, I don't think any of the department heads, we're not gonna tell our people they can't.
Right.
They have that option and, um, if they, if they choose to wear a mask, by all means, they're gonna wear a mask. You know, when we have an arrest, um, the officer is wearing a mask and we offer masks to any person we have in custody.
Perfect.
Uh, once we bring them into the booking room and the same if we have to bring somebody in, wants to come in. Um, like we've recently just started doing fingerprints for residents or people who work for businesses in town. Uh, when they come in, they're, generally everybody has a mask. Um, and those who don't, if we offer them a mask, they accept it, it's you know, some of the arrests we have, just to be defiant, they'll say no.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we still have safeguards in place. The, they're still six feet away from the officer when they're being processed. When they're being bailed, there's actually a piece of Plexi class, Plexiglas that cuts the table in half. Keeps them separated from the bail commissioner, so, um, I think, I think, you know, if we just don't require it, but if the individual employee wants to wear it because they feel safer, then they wear it.
I think I'm more concerned about that, I, I think I agree with that a hundred percent, I'm more concerned about somebody who is coming from the public and they have to do business now, you know, if it's no longer that you can do it online or they have to come in to do something and they don't know if they're dealing with somebody without a mask on that has or hasn't been vaccinated and now they feel uncomfortable. You know, I really, I, I just wanna make sure that, um, there's a there's protection for them, I guess, but I guess they can wear their, their own mask and uh, maybe we just keep making it so that you don't have to come into the office or you could meet someone outside if you had to, um, sign something. I'm, I'm not quite sure how to make sure that that, the public is safe.
Well, also remember, most of the time, if the public's dealing, i- so in other words, if they're in the front lobby so that they're talking to Denise or they're in the planning and zoning or lobby, or if they're in the town clerk tax collector lobby, the employees are behind glass.
Right, right.
I think as department heads, we have to be aware of the person that we're working with.
Mm-hmm.
Getting the, you know, the residents in town. If somebody comes to our door, I always wear this. I have it, so I can quickly pull it up, because we're out on calls constantly, we're doing all this other stuff, Tommy's got one too. You know, if somebody comes up to the door, cause our door's locked, they gotta ring the doorbell, we greet them. If I go out there and they have a mask on, I'm gonna put one on too.
Okay, that's fair.
Personally, I can only speak for me and our department, I'm gonna greet them with a mask on, if they're coming out. You know, if they come in without a mask on, that I'm vaccinated and that's their option to do that, then I'll still work with them and, you know, I'll leave it up to myself and the other members here. And that's how I've worked with all of our depart, uh, all of our members. If they feel comfortable, more comfortable with a mask on, go for it. If they don't want to, then it's up to them, you know, after this, but I think in our department, we have it a little bit easier because it's one person at a time. Um, I think some of the other departments, the library is definitely one of those ones where, and the, uh, tax collector, you're gonna have multiple people from the public in the same area that somebody might come in without a mask, somebody might come in without a mask, and that's where you might see that conflict. I think for the majority of us, we have something, you know, um, the, the windows up in between us or we're gonna already wear a mask, so I think we have different options with that.
I like your solution, that makes a lot of sense, if they're wearing a mask, you wear a mask. I am concerned about the library. Is anyone from the library on?
Ruth is here with her hand raised.
Hi. Hi, um, yeah, so, you know, I haven't talked with the trustees yet, but it's a conversation we'd need to have and, um, I would uh, my recommendation, uh, would be for the library staff, you know, it's no longer mandatory. Right now, we wear a mask when someone comes into the building, but we right now have limits as to how many people can be in the building. And you've been in the library, you know how close everything is. Um, I would think that now that the ma- mask mandate has been lifted, that it's not mandatory, that I think we're gonna see a number of people that are going to want to take advantage of that. No longer having to wear a mask. And it might be one of those things that, um, if someone, if we see someone come in and they're wearing a mask, then maybe we ask them, is it all right if I am helping you without my mask on? Or, or should I put a mask on? Would you feel more comfortable if I have a mask on? I think that's where I would recommend for our staff, is to deal with the public, cause we only have that one piece of Plexiglas right at checkout. You know, we like to be able to accommodate people who now feel that they're, you know, they're vaccinated, they're, they're in the safe zone now, still coming in. Um, that we would, again, like the chief said, you know, keep masks available for the, for people when they come in, still have it there, still have it there as an option. I'm not sure what the best solution is.
Yeah, that's hard, cause like now I'm like, okay, so now I, I now know my daughter can't go to the library then, cause, cause that, that is an increased risk. So then I, I think about what is other people, so maybe what we do is we go forward with this plan. And then if there are people that are having a time, we could do something where there are, maybe there's a specific time of the day that the library is
Sure.
Everyone's masked and when you first open at a certain time and then that person is comfortable, you know, if there's a problem. So maybe we realize that this, that we'll follow this rule and then follow the needs of the town as we go forward.
That's a good idea, I hadn't, hadn't even thought about that, uh, maybe having a time like we did for seniors, well, we didn't do it for seniors, but that other stores had
Right.
High-risk people come shopping at seven AM, so
Exactly.
Maybe at ten AM they come to the library, right, before official opening, yeah, that's a good idea.
And excuse me for a second too, we could also not do many changes now because May seventh, other changes are going to come out. So we can, we can always revisit this at the next meeting and the next meeting after that.
Good idea.
You know, that whatever we decide tonight doesn't have to stay forever.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, but I do wanna think a lot about the, the kids that aren't, that aren't vaccinated and, and make sure we're just being aware of those kinds of things. Thank you.
Okay, we have consensus, Julie. So I'd like to, uh, enter a motion. Move to no longer require wearing a mask when in the town office building, effective May fifteenth. Can I have a second?
Okay. So that's two motions on the floor.
Well.
Cause we already made the motion, we seconded, then we had discussion, so I'm not gonna second the second one and we'll just let that one die and then move back to the other one, so I guess.
And if we say no, then that means we're gonna discuss this again later when more decisions have been made, is that correct?
Yeah, we can, we can say no.
This was the other one. So, Mr. Bugby, you wanna enter a motion?
No, because there's a motion and a second already on the table. So
You want me to do a roll call vote?
That, I said, there's no more discussion, yes.
Well, I asked, I asked if there was discussion and you said
I don't agree with no longer, uh, having a mask, I think that it's more nuanced, that's what I think is confusing. So I think, I'd like the idea of people that work in the town office not having to wear a mask, I don't, so I don't, I don't know how to answer this question.
Okay.
So do you wanna propose an amendment to the motion?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay, how, how if we do this, I will remove my second. And Mr. Brown, if you remove the motion, then we can start again.
Okay. I will, I will just table a motion.
So, no, there's no motion on the table at the moment.
That's what, that's right.
So, Katran, if you want to restate something, go ahead, or remo- re- remove something.
Okay, um, I move to no longer require to wear a mask when in the town office and other town buildings when the public is not present. And then to uh, I don't know how to say that, cause to match the mask wearing in some buildings, but I don't know how to deal with the library on that one.
Well, the library trustees make the rules for the library.
Oh, good, yeah, perfect, you have no control over that.
Perfect, so to, to move to, um, to no longer require a mask when in the town office building unless working with the public and they are wearing a mask, then we match their mask wearing with a mask.
Effective?
What date, I don't, I don't, not concerned. May fifteenth, sure.
Denise, do you have all that? Yes?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it on the Yeah, we'll, we'll get it on the tape.
Okay.
Thanks. Sorry.
All right. Second.
You can tell him new.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Selectman Brown, yes. Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
And I also put out there for us to think about because we're kind of starting to alleviate in terms of COVID restrictions. Can we ask the two chiefs and maybe Karen Rossi to, and maybe they've already had this discussion, when we can start opening things back up like at the PSC to have meetings and stuff like that? And so we don't have to do Zoom stuff?
The problem with meetings at the public safety complex as it's currently the six foot rule, as an example, for a planning board meeting, with the planning board and people in the audience, you can only have up to, I believe it's 12 people. So the problem with holding meetings is the space, is the space. Putting the six foot rule out, that's the issue.
So really, so I'm sorry.
So even if we were to open it wide up tomorrow, you can't, we can't accommodate, we can't turn people away when they come for a meeting. So having this six foot space makes it, makes the reason why we can't hold meetings.
So it's really, we're waiting for the state to remove that restriction. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So I assume you and the chiefs will be monitoring that and it'll tell us when that is taking place. We'll probably see it in the news as well, but so we can open it back up. I think I get more questions about that than anything in terms of, you know, when are we going to have meetings again? When are we going to have meetings? They're getting tired. They're getting, what is it? Zoomed out, if you will.
Yeah. Some people really like the Zoom meetings and some people don't.
Yeah. Well, I like parts of it and other parts I don't. So, but that's the question I'm getting.
Because we're a town that I think one of the things we've talked about is making sure we're accessible to everyone. I think we have to find a way to make sure that we can continue to meet. If we meet in public, that someone who is immunocompromised can still meet, maybe through the Zoom platform there or whatever, but there are some interesting rules around that. We'll have to be aware of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I'd like to make a motion. Well, let's see, we got a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Can I get?
Katrin?
What?
Second, you, because you can't hear my seconds.
Oh, sorry.
Roll call vote.
We were, we already went through the vote on that. So I was not sure we were voting on.
Consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, we didn't know.
Got it. I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes. Consent agenda accepted. Next. Miscellaneous unfinished business.
I don't have anything.
Anybody?
Uh, we're going to make a plan for the meeting for the goals and objectives. That is a separate meeting of its own, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we're going to establish that.
Okay, perfect.
So when are we going to do that?
Soon. Can we do it next week?
Um.
Well, when, yeah, we could do it next week. I could anyway. Do it next week.
Well, when next week?
I'm super flexible. My kids are on vacation.
Yeah, I think, I think right now, I think I'm anything from Wednesday on.
Yeah.
I'm not positive. I'll have to look.
Well, we have a meeting on the 29th already. Right?
Correct.
So you want to do the 28th?
That sounds good to me. Anytime other than 12:30 to 2:30 for me, I can do.
Well, how about if we do six on the 20, 6 PM on the 28th?
Great. Um, on the 28th. Okay.
So Julie, you can post it for us and do all the things you do.
Yep.
Please?
Yep.
Julie, someone hands up.
Yep. Um. Does anyone want to hear from Tasha Lewis?
Yeah, this is Tasha Lewis, uh, at 35 James Farm Road. Um, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I'm requesting that the town take into consideration our concerns regarding James Farm Road drainage culvert issue that was discussed during the April 5th select board meeting. Um, as you work through this important issue, um, I know that, uh, the town is not ready to make any decisions about this, but I think it's important to consider, um, all facts and the information that is contained, you know, certainly within, uh, the town's file. Um, I want to share that, you know, as a resident of this community, I'm concerned that any blockage or limitation of the natural flow of water through the existing roadway culvert will cause damage to our property, you know, and to our home. Additionally, I think it's important tonight too, that, you know, I am concerned that any blockage of this roadway culvert will affect the integrity and safety of James Farm Road. And there's a number of literature out there with respect to designing roads and the intended purpose of culverts. Um, so I think that's important to take into consideration as well. Um, this drainage area of interest, um, and the existing natural drainage, uh, and the purpose of the roadway culvert is to convey water from one side of the road to the other side of the road. And it's important to continue to keep that in mind. Uh, both the drainage, um, and the culvert are shown on the James Farm subdivision plans in about, uh, 1973. That information is in the town's files. And these files suggest that the plans went through a review and approval process between the developer and the town. And, you know, based on my review of the town's records, the culvert was installed at the low point of the road to convey water in a natural drainage and has been conveying water for nearly 50 years since the time the subdivision was built. And last, I would like to clarify that the drainage ditch on the west side of James Farm Road, so the side that I live on, um, is located in the town right of way between our driveway culvert. Um, and so, and that location between our driveway culvert and the culvert of interest, uh, is not a new drainage ditch. The town performed maintenance of that existing, uh, ditch last summer, and it was based on a conversation, uh, that we had with the town. But I'd also like to add that, you know, my husband and I worked very closely with N H E C to identify trees, um, that were on our property adjacent to that right of way that were a potential hazard for falling on the power lines and into the road. And then we removed those. So it was a cleanup of the ditch. And on our part, we took care of a number of trees so that they would not present a future hazard, uh, to the power lines or to people on the road. Um, I certainly appreciate your time tonight. And I just really respectfully ask that the town, when you're taking this into consideration, that you consider, you know, our concerns, uh, when you're making decisions regarding the natural flow of water through that roadway culvert of interest. So thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board want to hear again from Renee Littkey?
Sure.
Up to Mr. Brown.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear anything.
Do you want to, um, hear from Ms. Littkey again? She has her hand raised.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Hi, yes, I just wanted to, apologies. I just, go ahead.
There's someone on. Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm in agreement, um, with the same concerns that were just raised by Tasha Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? Anybody?
All set.
Okay. I'd like to enter a motion, enter into a non-public session per New Hampshire RSA 91 hyphen A colon 3, 2, C, and I. Roll call vote required.
I think it's an L, Mr. Brown.
Okay, an L.
That's okay.
Roll call vote required.
You need a second.
Select, so, okay.
You need a second.
I will second.
Let's say second.
Second.
Roll call vote required. Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
So, select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes.
Okay, let me just move through and put everybody on hold.
See everyone.
And you're all big.
So when you, but you can see people when you're screen sharing.
I cannot see anyone but the person talking because I do not have a fancy, I have an iPad. So the only way I could, and a lot of other people have the same problem. So the only way I can have, feel like we're speaking at all.
Gotcha.
Okay. So I would love it if anytime we are not needing to look at the screen, we took it down because it's, there are more people than me that can't see. That's just my opinion.
Do we need to seal the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to seal the minutes.
Second.
Oh.
The thing that I'm questioning, Mr. Brown, is you can hear my votes for yes, but you can't hear my seconds. I, I don't know. What's, what's up with that?
I don't know. That's, it's just a matter of how you're facing the microphone, I guess, Scott. That's the only thing I can figure.
All right, all right, all right.
But I'm not the only one that could not hear you.
Really?
That, that, yes, indeed.
I could hear him.
Oh, no, you don't. Don't go doing that.
No, no, I could hear him when he, when he seconded it. I just, that's why I said something.
Okay. All right. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Did you get a vote on ceiling?
On the ceiling.
Yeah, vote on the ceiling.
Oh, okay. I make a motion to seal the minutes.
We already have that. We just need to call the roll call vote, please, sir.
Okay, roll call vote. Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm glad we got that done.
And select person Brown.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, are you not voting, Mr. Brown?
No, selectman Brown, yes.
Motion passes.
Is there, is there anything else, Scott? You'd like to come in on a last minute shot?
Uh, I have more horrible stories about Katrin. We could talk about that.
I think we're done for the evening. It's been lovely. Thank you. Go ahead. Make your motion.
Then you must make a motion, miss.
I make a motion to, I make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
I second that.
There you are.